So how's about we call the city council work session for January nineteenth, twenty twenty one to order a roll call, please?
Councilor McBride.
Here, although I don't know why I'm not showing on the screen.
I I don't know either. It looks like you have your video turned off.
Okay.
Um, I can ask you to start your video. Okay. Um, councillor Cofield.
Here.
Um, councillor Yonelle Holloman.
Here.
Councillor Martinez Plankarte.
Present.
Mayor Rogers.
Present.
Councillor Bacon.
Here.
Councillor Finley.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. All right. Again, good evening, everyone, and good evening to anyone who might be joining us uh by computer or phone. All right, let's go. Item number three, review of the council agenda and meeting. Any comments for um the business session? We do have the one.
We have the one. We need to switch Brad and Josh.
Yep, so if we.
The audit needs to come first.
Right, so if we could, uh, for those scoring at home, if we could switch items four B and four A um in order to uh accommodate the schedule of our auditor, so we'll do that. All right, anything else for the for the business session? All right, seeing nothing. Uh, how's about council business items? Again, seeing nothing. All right, moving along. All right, the city update on this is presentation five, a city update on COVID nineteen. I will turn it over to Karen and Kesia.
Good evening. Um, my name is Karen Tarmichael. I'm the project specialist for the city of Newburgh. For the last eight and a half months, I've also been your COVID coordinator liaison um for the city staff and the public buildings. So we're here just to kind of give you an update of where we are, where we've been. Um, just a quick few minutes for you. Is since last March, um, obviously, we have done a great deal of modification to the public buildings, um floor markings, staggered shifts, um maximum occupancy, um one way in, one way out, um those kind of control measures for both the safety for the public and for our employees. Uh, lots of PPE, uh sneeze guards and barriers, much of which was constructed by our public works crew in their shop, um partially due to supply, partially to help save cost. Um mail quarantine for incoming mail HVAC units on regular inspections and the fans turned on all the time, the same precautions a lot of other facilities are taking. A good portion of some of the modifications we made were um handled under cares. So that did allow us to save some of those unusual expenses and be reimbursed for them. Changes in staffing, uh but prior to the extreme risk and some of the closures, we also limited the number of people in lobbies, added additional spacing, we staggered employee shifts, tried to pare down essential services and make sure that we were providing those, but also limiting uh staff exposure. Uh, we tried to switch as much as we could online for the public or one-on-one meetings. Um, you've seen our library do curbside pickup and resources. Um, lots of hybrid schedules where we alternate how many people are in the building at one time. Uh, some teleworking on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or evenings and mornings to help limit the number of times the essential staff were exposed. Obviously, there are some staff we can't do that with law enforcement, public works, especially those two groups, dispatch definitely. Um, we can't do a hybrid of telecommuting with those groups, but we've done what we can with barriers and mitigation to how many people are around each other in close proximity to try and keep those essential folks working. Uh, let's see, what else? Uh, we did add in some innovation, which I'm sure most everybody has done, web meetings, online training resources, um hands-free disinfecting. We've switched over to an inventory system for the library that can be done by a remote wand. They're not touching everything. Um, obviously, computers, video conferencing, uh, other platforms for planning like Basecamp and GoTo and those things. Um, and the technology needed to support them. Again, much of that was paid for through CARES reimbursement, um which really helped when it comes to laptops and things of that nature. We also reduced the number of people using our fleet vehicles, either signing a certain pool of people if they're shift work or one person per vehicle and that is their vehicle unless we're in an emergency. Uh, that has also allowed us to disinfect vehicles and keep that contact down. And then PPE, we um have a really, really good supply of PP on hand. Um, our public works team resourced supplies from some unusual places. They have a um really great system for disinfectant. They bought it in bulk and then concentrate and dilute it for us. Uh, we have a weekly burn rate count that we keep. Uh, I get reports from the essential departments every Monday or Tuesday of who has what and how much they use. So we have a month-by-month data of what we have, and we know when we're getting low on something. Um, and although that's not reported to the state anymore like it was the first few months, we're continuing to do that. Um, we're hoping that maybe that data will allow us to apply for some FEMA reimbursement later on. Those grants are a little more complicated than the CARES was, but being able to say we went through five thousand face coverings in a month is, you know, data that FEMA can work with, so. Um, we stay informed regularly. There are multiple people in the city who are on communication lists with county, several different commissioners, and also the health department, uh several of our community groups, and then also at the state level, and we all share that information back and forth. Um, we've had to do a bit of advocacy when it came to the vaccines that we hadn't had to do when we were worried about PPE. Um, just because as everyone knows, the classifications keep changing daily, and uh we wanted to make sure that in addition to our law enforcement, our paramedics, our, you know, dispatchers, that we have another crew of essential staff that must be on at all times, and we wanted to make sure they were in the rollout of the phases. Um, so we stay in regular touch. We keep informed with some of the other professional groups, too. Um, so right now, when it comes to the vaccines, our law enforcement officers, those who wanted access to vaccines, all were encouraged to do so last Thursday. Twelton Valley Fire and Rescue came out to Newburgh to provide a point of delivery for vaccinations. Our officers could get in and get out and get back to work. Um, so that was great news. We're now advocating, of course, to get our other essential workers, like our sewer workers and laboratory staff um on that list as well, but we know it's not our turn yet, but we have signed three agreements for delivery of that service when our turn comes for the rest of the staff, uh both public works, essential service, and then general staff. Uh, we have agreements with Providence, with the county, and then again, this agreement with Twelton Valley. So when the turn comes up for everybody else, those who want vaccines, we can get them to them. Um, we will continue all our PPE and all our mitigation until we have a announcement from the Department of Health that we have reached that percentage level in the community. So face coverings, limited personal contact is going to continue for the foreseeable future. Uh, we are prepared for reopening when that magic day comes. We've got everything in stock and ready. So we're just waiting for us to leave the extreme hazard uh conditions. Until then, the public buildings are are pretty restricted. Um, and that is kind of where we are. We're almost in a holding pattern, I hate to say, because we're just waiting for the next phase. Um, but we feel pretty comfortable that we're supporting our staff. We have our control plans in place. Um, all the deadlines that OH um OSHA set are all met. Um, so we feel really confident that we're prepared for whatever phase comes next for the city staff and the public we serve, so.
Right. Great. Um, any questions, folks? Yep, Elise.
Well, I had the privilege of actually talking with Karen and Kesia a little, a couple of weeks ago, different hat, but um I just wanted to ask question, so just more from, I guess, a public health perspective, after um the, you know, of access to vaccination happens for city employees, I would, you know, are you in the phase of talking about how you would continue um safety precaution measures, um social distancing, asking, knowing that we don't have enough information um on the transmission of the virus, even if you've received the vaccine?
Correct. We do. We are definitely still proceeding with the uh all the things that are in place today will remain in place, even if we hit that seventy-five, eighty-five percent benchmark they're talking about in the general public. Um, we don't have everyone who can take the vaccine on staff. There there are always those people in the public who also cannot, and so that's going to affect what we do. We will remain in this mode, I foresee, for quite a while. We do have a phased list in our control plan, though.
I just really want to say, I mean, I've been like blown away by how on how on top of it both of you benefit, so thank you. I mean, you're doing better than I think some medical societies.
Oh, it was definitely true experience.
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else that's on this meeting. Um, I haven't met some of you, and I look forward to being able to in the near future, but my name's Kesia Warner, and I'm the Assistant City Manager. I'm also overseeing HR. So I've been in my role for about three months, and a large part of my responsibilities have been focused on our COVID response, and I didn't want to uh miss the opportunity just to talk a bit about how we've also put in protocols and policies around COVID uh precautions. We've really been responsive to changing guidelines that have come out through the CDC and OSHA and state and county, and will continue to be responsive as if, in the event, things continue to change. But one of the things I think um that I would say is really impressive with our organization is that we have been really nimble, and we've been able to establish safety protocols for our employees and for the public, and still continue to provide critical services and continuity of operations. So um that's our, two of our primary goals right there, and we continue to meet those. Um, but some of the policies and protocols I just wanted to highlight real quick, and after that, if you have more questions, please ask. That's why Karen and I are here tonight. Um, but we've been able to stand up the telework, our remote working policy for our employees. Um, emergency COVID leave policy, notification to our employees of workplace exposure, uh COVID symptomatic employee protocols, OSHA compliance training regarding COVID safety measures for all of our city employees. As Karen mentioned, we've been able to meet the OSHA um requirements, and so I'm very proud that we did it on their deadline, too. And uh, lastly, we've been able to establish the responsibilities for our employees and supervisors um in responding to COVID in the workplace and among our employees. So we've really been able to to put a lot of structure and process in place in a short period of time. Um, so, you know, the goals are providing the safeguards for our employees. Uh, we're doing great communications and physical measures, creating a safe environment to work in, and I think that helps with the peace of mind for our employees and hopefully for the public as well. Um, you know, we we are going to continue to adapt as we need to through the vaccine process, and, you know, hopefully get to the other side pretty quickly. But I think that as well is going to be evolving as we experience when we get the vaccine, and then how many of our employees will get vaccinated and what that looks like, so. I expect we'll be doing more updates to you as we um have some experience with that. Uh, but this is actually the chance for questions, and I see that there is a question.
Please, far away.
Oh, this is my, this is my space. Um, I mean, first off, I just like, for people that aren't in immersed in COVID, everything that Kesia just listed off, I mean, that takes so much time. I mean, just all of the policy updating and making sure that people understand what each thing means and just um notification of exposures in general, that's also my job for Providence, Oregon, and it is a beast. It's horrible. Takes so much time, and, you know, I'm sure you have timelines of responsiveness. You want to provide provide that information to people, and um, one of the questions that I had, which I think we may have talked about at one point, is just um are you providing or is the city providing um any additional leave or PTO time um in anticipation of um staff members needing to have one to two days off to recover from the vaccine, from the vaccine? What we're experiencing is really about sixty percent of caregivers having symptoms post-first vaccine dose and thirty percent with pretty severe symptoms. Um, and then second dose is it's amplified um from your first, your first vaccine dose response. So at Providence, we have two days of additional leave for care for caregiver. So I just wondered if we have considered that or if that's something that could be considered to support um employees to not have to use their their PTO bank, given this is a very different situation.
Thanks for that question. We absolutely have started to talk about that and what that would look like. Um, and I think, you know, we're just starting to get that information. You shared that with us when we met, and I think it's useful for us to try to figure out what that looks like structurally. So um, you know, I appreciate the the statistics, too, that helps put some framework around it.
And staggering staffing. Woo, that's another thing.
Yeah.
We'll get it on the same day.
Right.
Stephanie, did you have a question?
I did, and I think Kesia kind of went over this um without being specific, but my question um originally was around sort of sick leave policy going forward, because um I think we're we're diving into a future where um this is not the last time we're going to see something like this, and how that will work so that we can sort of be um proactive in preventing spread of anything else that may come our way and how um our sick leave policy addresses that. People who just can't afford to take time off because they have to feed their families and things like that, and so um I think you kind of touched on that, but I'd just like to make sure that we're paying attention to how our sick leave policy um gets us into the future where um people may have to be out of work um sooner in order to prevent um widespread issues again.
And I and I think um to just be more specific, I don't know if it's been covered in a prior work session with you all, but our emergency COVID leave policy allows for eighty hours of um leave for our employees that need to be quarantined or isolated due to an exposure, being symptomatic, or caring for someone that is in their family. And so we've been able to um offer some of that reassurance to our employees, um because we have had some of our employees in the situation that you just described.
Speaking of that, have, I mean, how have we had many positive test results?
Well, we don't ask our employees to provide that information back to us. As a matter of fact, I think, you know, we we wouldn't necessarily want to hold their health information, but just for context, um we have had roughly twenty-five employees that have gone out on quarantine for some reason or another, symptomatic or exposure um since the beginning of December. So that's a month and a half. Um, and, you know, we've got a hundred and fifty employees roughly, so it's it's uh not an insignificant um I I think issue to for us to address in terms of capacity and staffing, and each of our employees that has to go out re is a slightly different circumstance or situation, and so the leave is formatted in such a way for that individual and their circumstances. So it just becomes um quite a lot of effort to make sure that we're doing right by our employees right now. But that's, I think, how it is probably for, you know, everyone that's got uh employees that they're looking after.
All right, other uh questions, folks? We've got the raise hand function, if we can use, or Bryce, that's a, go for it.
Actual actual raised hand. Um, another question so much is wanting to express gratitude and thanks. Um, like Elise mentioned, I mean, it's a huge lift, and you all have and had full-time jobs before COVID. Um, so to layer this on top, um, I'd at least want to take time and space to acknowledge uh the work that that takes and to say thank you. Um, because imagine, yeah, it's just a lot, and I know that it takes increased time and stress that affects family members. Um, so thank you very much for helping keep our community safe. It matters a whole lot.
It's what we do.
There you go.
Yeah.
Any other uh questions or comments, folks? All right, I'll go ahead. I can't, oh, sorry.
Okay, yeah, so I was just curious if there's been a conversation regarding like folks who cannot return to work, like, let's say, August or whenever, you know, folks are back at work, like, for some reason, not everyone is covered, has it, like, in terms of vaccine or choose not to get the vaccine for personal reasons? Has there been a conversation about that, like, what that would look like um for your, for the employees?
So I think um the best way to answer that commissioner, or I'm sorry, councillor Plankarte, is that we actually are just starting those conversations. Um, just because it's a little bit of uh reading the tea leaves right now to know where we're going to land and what that percentage would be for um, you know, a vaccination number in our community, for instance, and I think that we'll rely upon our county health professionals to uh inform the conversation around when we'd be able to bring everyone back to a workplace that we're not observing the COVID um protocols that we are now. Um, but I would expect that we're going to be in this through the summer. I mean, this is just guesswork, but maybe others have ideas about that. So I'm sorry I didn't give you a more specific answer, but I think we're just sort of feeling it out right now, doing our best to plan.
All right, other uh questions or comments, folks? Looking for hands. See no hands. All right. Uh, well, thank you. Thank you both for for all of your work, as as Bryce mentioned. Thank you. What you're doing is is fantastic, and you know, I should also mention that uh that Karen, in addition to this, um also does uh she or helps organize a community partners calls every other week uh and the Equity Task Force as well, along with all the other duties. So thank you, guys. Thank you. Thank you all so very much. All right. All right, uh, let's move on to the committee discussion, item five B. Um, Sue and or Dan, I believe.
I think I get the first half of this, so um I guess it's Dan. Um, Sue's got a a PowerPoint or a brief slideshow for us, and we'll try and follow that, but while she's pulling that up, I just will say thank you to uh, you know, Kesia, to uh Karen, who wears many hats, and, you know, I I joke, she's the COVID queen. Uh, she doesn't like that, but um, you know, just the work that uh that our staff has done. I mean, it has been, like, everyone has dealt with, you know, rolling with the punches, and so I just want to echo the thanks there while we have a minute. And as you can see, I get the challenges. I get to lay out uh some of the uh the reason uh that we're bringing this forward. And so I'll try to summarize this, and then we'll move on to uh some discussion around ideas and um essentially some of the uh the next steps we might recommend, and um technically, I I think Sue actually gave me the short por- portion of this, because I think there's only seven challenges on the list, but we've got ten ideas, and so I'll go quickly. Um, so challenges uh for boards and commissions, and this really, the the focus here is um the process. Uh, you know, the how we select, how we uh onboard, how we manage, how we care and feed and sustain, um, you know, how we even conceive of our boards and commissions, and so really kind of thinking broadly here around um the needs that we have uh in a policymaking realm, the needs we have in the community involvement realm, and uh you know, how we take care of folks who are willing to give us their time and uh volunteer for the, on behalf of the community for the city. So um, starting with membership and terms, um, we obviously have ad hoc uh committees that are formed. Uh, so the terms vary widely. We've got two-year, three-year, four-year, and months of uh of committee work, and so um, it can be very challenging, I think, when you're uh thinking of the administrative side of this, when you're trying to manage uh setting these things up, when you're trying to manage uh who is supposed to be where, to a certain degree, uh how many folks, uh what are they supposed to be working on? Um, you know, what is the membership and makeup? Um, you know, I think from the standpoint of of the council, uh, you know, the recruitment process can be a bear, because you're potentially ongoing recruitment throughout the year, as some of these ad hoc committees may pop up. And, you know, it it becomes a tracking nightmare. It becomes uh really inconsistent onboarding for uh volunteers who are coming and and helping out, and uh just tracking uh when people, people are coming on or off is often a challenge for us uh on the backend. Number two on the list, technology and passwords. Um, as you may have experienced, or maybe you will experience, our passwords sunset at a somewhat frequent clip, and um one of the things I experienced when I got here, which I appreciate I I T very much uh for changing, was I didn't know my password had uh sunset, and I couldn't log in and um didn't get a notice, and so I asked them to provide a little bit of a warning, but when you're not logging into your uh city email, which we give uh our volunteers uh access to city email, if you're not logging in on a regular basis, you're shut out, and you're not able to then get communications uh which obviously helps to uh inform what the agenda might be for your committee, or hey, we're going to meet this time instead of this time, and you know, just the the regular communication that you're able to get through email um around the the actual uh agenda setting and the 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 process of of being an active uh participant in a board or commission. You lose that once you've lost your access to email. Uh, beyond that, I think technology uh can be our friend. It can also be a challenge. Um, and so just even the the support, uh level of support that we have is uh somewhat uneven when we come back to, you know, how we, what are what are we supplying a volunteer? Um, some folks get uh city-provided technology in in their their committee, some don't. Is that something we should change? You know, those are, those are questions and challenges we also need to wrestle with. Um, maintaining attendance and contact. Um, you know, not surprisingly, uh, things come up, and, you know, again, if you're not able to get into your seat, city email, you may just not know what's happening, and so you may miss a meeting, and so maintaining attendance is important. Um, it assures some level of continuity. It also makes sure that we can have certain meetings when you have a quorum or don't have a quorum, uh if that's necessary to to proceed with the more of a a quasi judicial or, you know, a a different, a certain committees. Not every committee has that problem, but um, making making sure we know who, from a staffing standpoint, is coming is is pretty critical. Um, knowing that you've got, uh, you know, critical mass that makes the meeting worthwhile, and then, you know, maintaining that contact, you know, is sort of what I was referring to in the beginning of making sure we know um how to support the the volunteers, the folks who actually are spending the time, and so, you know, making sure that they have a comfortable idea of who their contact is, not always something we're able to to get them and or that they're comfortable with. Um, and so I think that starts with onboarding. It continues through uh their service, but, you know, it's something that we can work on and and standardize, I think. Um, number four, staff support. Uh, COVID, as we talked about just now, is is throwing us all for a loop for a while now. Uh, you know, these remote meetings like we're having right now is the way we we sort of have to be, and so um, they require a a different level of support. Um, having a remote meeting requires somebody to set it up, somebody to manage it, somebody to to do the, you know, to be there essentially to run the technology, and, you know, becomes a a completely different set of uh staff challenges that requires often an extra body and extra person to to run the technology. Uh, number five is inconsistent onboarding. I kind of talked about this a little bit already, but, you know, just the idea that there really is no central point of contact for volunteers i- in the city. That's something I personally um trying to remedy or working to remedy, but uh, the idea that there's not a point of contact then results in a, you know, one of these things of who who should I talk to? Well, I don't know. Talk to that person and an easy handoff, but not necessarily a good uh experience, and and something that I think can degrade the experiences. Um, and, you know, essentially have people who would be fantastic volunteers for the city have a bad experience and not want, not want to come back or be willing to volunteer again. Um, you know, one of the things around onboarding that's critical, I think, as well, is ground rules for communication in the committee and how we also uh do um scope and mission and and all of those things, sort of setting the table in the beginning of uh the the process for the the, the process for the, whether it's an ad hoc committee or an ongoing one, you know, just setting the table. Here's the things we do. Here's how we do them. Here's the expectation we have for you and your service. Here's the expectation we have for staff, et cetera. And, you know, by communicating those things and providing and onboarding, especially thinking about issues that could be problematic around perhaps maybe legal or other specific issues, you know, we, we need to make sure that we're providing those things upfront as well. And it's, it's completely across, across the board uneven. Number six is diversity and inclusion of membership. And really, one of the, the things that probably, I think Mayor Rogers highlighted in this last round of appointments was really the opportunity we had with more people to encourage a greater amount of diversity and, and, you know, to place people different backgrounds and experience on boards and commissions. It's unfortunately not always been the case. We've had that opportunity, had that, those folks apply. So, you know, to a certain degree, I think it's about advertising and awareness. It's also, I think, about some of the infrastructure we, we supply for boards and commissions to make sure that the folks are aware that they can serve, what, what that looks like. But also, you know, I think what's been discussed and, and I'll throw it out there is compensation and or you know, essentially recognition that includes stipend or of some kind, or there's things of that nature. The other thing around inclusion, I think, always comes back to what's in it for me, you know, a membership organization. You know, members are always going to ask that. And, you know, it's that question of why should I serve? What, what's in it for me? How, how am I going to derive something from this? And, and what am I, what should I expect? And if we go back to inconsistent onboarding and some of the other issues, that becomes a challenge. The last one, sustainability of committees by having engaged productive volunteers and preparing future leaders, I think exceeds the line quota here for PowerPoint, but you know, it's really, you know, in essence, trying to make sure that we have people who are willing to come back, but also that we're encouraging new voices. And, you know, again, having the opportunity of twenty folks who apply. How do we keep them engaged? How do we, you know, provide other opportunities? And frankly, you know, beyond committees, maybe there are other ways that we can use their type, their talents in support of the community and support of the city. So those are, are things we can and should explore. But one of the things related to sustainability of committees that I like, I would note is you know, just the idea of what does the council want, you know, and, and what does the council want annually? Because, you know, again, we've got a lot of ad hoc committees and things that come up, you know, often staff driven, you know, but I think staff driven in a, in a positive way, you know, people, Doug, for instance, got a grant. We weren't sure we were going to get the grant. We, we put up a committee to make sure we've got responsiveness and, and able to, to continue to get the grants to use the funding and to actually get that work done. You know, those are good things, but you know, there's a question of how do we want to structure committees? Do we want to have a different set of criteria, you know, a different way of organizing them around council goals, for instance, or other priorities? Do we want to focus on? You know, essentially broader committees, maybe fewer ad hoc committees, which would allow the grant opportunity, for instance, to slot into an existing committee as regular work. Or do we want to have, you know, annual served committees that I would maybe not call ad hoc? I would maybe call them planned, but having maybe a, a very critical issue something finite dealt with and moved forward, you know, so give us feedback on this. And it's a small matter, but it's an important one to council, for instance, of moving something forward. I, I think diversity, equity, inclusion of, okay, we're going to get these recommendations. Once we have our equity assessment, there's likely going to be a lot of competing priorities in our budget or competing priorities in staff time. How do we maybe put a group together that can address those kinds of things? And maybe that should be a finite thing. Maybe it shouldn't necessarily be an ongoing committee forever and ever, but it's important. And so let's put together a board and, and, and address those kinds of things. Similar to the issue with the SDCs, you know, do we want to have a, a committee on that? And, and if that's the case, what's the scope? What, you know, make sure that it's a good experience for the volunteer. Let's make sure that we have really honed in and, and define that. So that we've then got a sustainable experience. People are saying to their friend, I, I volunteered, I made a difference on X or Y thing and you should do it too. So with that, I will turn it over to the idea lady and Sue will take us home.
Okay, so some of, just so you know, I'm, I'm kind of the committee person right now. So I, we have ninety-two. That was my last count. Some go off, some come on. It's just like employees. They, they have lives and sometimes they, they can't continue because they're moving out of town or, you know, whatever the case may be. So these were some ideas that are from my practical experience of almost seven years here. One is to have set recruitment periods. We have people go on and off committees, but if the committees can function in between. You know, perhaps it would be better for staff and the community to leave positions on committees vacant in between what I call the spring drive and the, and the fall drive. So most of your committees have terms that run the calendar year from January through December. But then we have our oddballs. Not that the library is an oddball, but we have that and citizens rate review and the student commissioners. And so they all start in the spring. So that's the way those run. Actually, the student commissioners in the code run from September through May. But once school is out, it's very hard for me to find kids, students to be on committees. So generally, that's why I would try and get them appointed in May, especially if we know we have some seniors going off. Uh, number two is the application has been the same since I, whenever I got here, I've looked and looked and looked and cannot find any, anywhere why the questions that are on the application are on it. So one of my suggestions to Dan was maybe the question should reflect council goals instead of the, the current questions. Um, we've talked about going to entirely an online application for all boards and commissions. I basically have a form that people fill out. And sometimes occasionally we do have people, generally older people who don't have computers and they want me to mail them a form and they'll fill the form out and either bring it by or mail it in. But definitely having an easier electronic version would help. Uh, number four, this is, has to do with your council rules. So in the charter, it says the mayor has the responsibility of appointing. And then your council rules interpret how that happens. So I did some research for Dan and looked at how other cities do it. And this isn't a statistical survey. This is just how some other cities do. Uh, some cities have the council or some members of the council pick committee members and do interviews. Some cities have the whole council do it. Some cities have a, a separate committee. Also, that would be under council committee called boards and commissions. And then C, part of this is our piecemeal checkerboard evolving history of the committees from nineteen thirty-six to present is the library. When they set theirs up, they have the library members actually interview the applicants here and then make a recommendation to council. But none of the other committees do that. So that, that's another option. Five, I'm trying with my virtual happy birthday campaign this year, but we need some sort of recognition for the volunteers. And the next birthday up is February fifth, traffic safety nineteen seventy-four. So you'll be hearing a little bit about that February first. Six is modernized committee roles and responsibilities. So I gave you a big three-page analysis and that was just Sue reading through the code and saying, hey, you know, some of this stuff could probably be updated. Seven is what Dan was talking about, about mission-driven committees, having them be a shorter timeframe. Rather than over the history here, we've had some ad hocks that have evolved into kind of standing committees and they may not necessarily serve that purpose anymore. Um, it all depends upon how they got set up under resolution or ordinance. Eight is fix the code language for standing committees. I pointed out a number of things in my analysis that were, you know, just fairly ancient. And or, you know, we had a lot of inconsistencies, like Dan said, two-year terms, three-year terms, four-year terms. We have a committee that doesn't have any set terms. That's affordable housing. Why? I don't know. It got set up that way. And again, it wasn't an overall approach. Nine was Colin's proposal. Y'all remember Colin from December. And Colin is coming back. Colin and the mayor and I and Casper, who is our traffic safety commissioner, student met and then Asher are going to come back and talk about what they've come up with on, at February first. And Colin's actually on the call tonight. Sorry, he's on the participant. The other is number ten. Um, and that is to perhaps look at changing the council rules. And it might really relate to number four, which is kind of appointing committees. And that would be to spread the ex officio duties of the mayor among the council. Um, right now, the way your council rules are written, the mayor is automatically an ex officio member of all the committees we form. And that's a very, very heavy time commitment. So those were just some of the ideas that I had come up with. And I'm not going to go further, Dan, into the analysis. I want to open it up so people have questions, but is there anything else you would like me to cover? Dan? No. Okay, so I'll stop talking. And I'm gonna stop the share unless any of you want to go back to the slides. No? Okay. Okay.
One thing I, I do want to mention too is that I, I think in addition to the ad hoc and standing, then we've got these sort of hybrid things that I'm not sure really what they are. So I mentioned earlier, we have community partners call that's once every couple of weeks. And these people are giving their time to sort of update community members. Equity task force is the same way. They're not exactly committees. Uh, and then there's Neds. I'm not sure what Neds is exactly and how that, how that fits into the whole scheme. So we've got, there's more, there's more than just this. And I, I do want to point out, this is probably more for the folks on the call, but RCA attachment one is committee guide and Sue has prepared that. And then attachment two is sort of issues and comments regarding these committees. So anyway, anyway, any questions or comments, folks, at this juncture? All right, it's obviously Bryce.
I can go after you. Go ahead.
I was just going to say was that, you know, I, I think, I think this is going to be a bit of a heavy lift in that um, I think there needs to be, you know, a fair amount of time put to this. And I, I would propose a subcommittee of the council to, to, to go after this. I don't know, Sue's chuckling, is form another committee in order to talk about committees. Perfect. Isn't that government-like?
Well, you know, St. Peter isn't at the gates of heaven anymore either. It's a committee.
That's right. That's right. So, uh, but I, but I think it is. I mean, I think there's a lot of moving pieces in this because I think once you start getting into a volunteer program, not only, not only are we talking about getting people to service committee, but then it becomes volunteer recognition, becomes, you know, all of this kind of stuff as well. So that's just one thought. I don't want to kill, I don't want to kill conversation. That's just one thought, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's a bad idea. In some ways it gets around in, in the, the packet, talking about not necessarily having the funds for like a committee coordinator. So having a subcommittee could probably do that. A few things can like one, especially for the standing committees, we absolutely have to have some sort of like, maybe not term limit, but some process to assess kind of what's going on. That I didn't realize that some of our standing committees didn't have like any accountability process. So theoretically, you could have folks on the same committee. I'm sure everyone does a great job. But in the event that someone didn't, it doesn't sound like we have a process either help hold them accountable or find out what it might look like to help them along their path. Is that right, Sue?
The only, the only part you have, and I think it's very so not customer service friendly, is that if a committee member misses two or more meetings, the council has a public hearing. So I have explained to Dan that I don't really want to do that. I, I don't think it's a very good method and I'm not sure why they adopted it in whatever year nineteen ninety-one that it was adopted. But I would like to, to change that. Some of the code language that's in there, we have never done one in all the time I've been here. Just explain.
Yeah, you know, I'm sure people back in the nineties were doing the best they, they could with, with what they had. And I think it's worth addressing, most definitely. A couple of things that came to mind, Dan, and I know you mentioned conversation around compensation and I know that gets tricky and is messy and at times can at least, um, in, in theory, be in opposition to like volunteerism in the spirit of what it means to serve in the community. So I, I acknowledge all that. I do wonder if there might be other ways to remove what might be some barriers. So I'm thinking about like childcare, for example, is not necessarily a form of, of direct compensation, but absolutely could be a way of removing a barrier for some folks who would want to serve and volunteer in this way. But to do so would require actually now like paying money for someone else to, to watch their children, to watch their children if they're unable to find friends or family members to do that. So I think childcare becomes an access issue that you might consider. I also think something like meals could be a way of honoring time. And again, this holds a financial cost, of course, but could be another way, you know, for not directly paying people, giving a stipend. To say like, if we're meeting once a month around this time, at least allow us to buy you dinner. I think in the, the packet, it said we have approximately thirteen committees and ninety-two people. If we were to anticipate each committee meeting once a month over the course of twelve months at approximately fifteen dollars a meal, it'd be around sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, which isn't insignificant. But for people who are really like helping us do core work to the city, to me is sixteen-five to be able to feed our community, seems like it, it might be something that's worth it. So childcare and meals are two ideas that came to mind as ways that we might be able to honor the time that folks and committees are, are giving and honor, yeah, their work.
I, I like those and, and I was in the back of my head thinking childcare at least. You know, it's funny, the, the one thing that popped in my head is a, on meals as a caution might be that there's a cost, but there is, you know, which is doable, but there's also the administrative of, you know, trying to, to get that set up and, and manage that, which then, you know, it goes back to the question of who's doing it, right? You know, we can't just keep doing the, the one of these and waiting for somebody else to do those kinds of things.
That's right. That's, that's real. We'll let the, the subcommittee have that conversation. Well, let me just ask one clarifying question. I mean, Doug, are there, or Doug or, or Dan, or are there, are there meetings every night of the week?
No, mayor, it, it, it depends in the ebb and flow. So I'll just use an example, you know, up until the first of December, I had seven different commission or committees that we were managing. One of those met on a quarterly basis, affordable housing, and it meets at one thirty in the afternoon. So that's during the day. All the others would meet at night. So I have planning commission that meets every month. Uh, I have historic that meets on a quarterly basis, affordable housings on a quarterly basis. And then our ad hoc committees meet based upon the project schedule. And so sometimes we may have four meetings of an ad hoc committee for a project. Other times we may have a dozen urban renewal. I'm sitting at that one, we're probably going to end up with about twelve meetings for that one. And so each project is a little bit different, but what we found for most of them, you know, ninety-nine percent is we do those in the evening. And then they, the timely start is dependent upon the committee members. I have some that start at five-thirty because that's was their desire. I have others that start at six because that was their desire. And I have others that start at seven. So we tried to, kind of reflecting to, to Bryce's comments, we, at least for my committees, we tried to adjust their household schedules that will admit and see if I can get consensus between seven to nine people to try and find the right days and the right times to be able to do those.
Thank you. Stephanie, did you have a question?
I just wanted to say I like the idea of a subcommittee and I'm not necessarily someone who loves to just add committees, but I think there's enough here that it, it bears like some good robust conversation. And I also think that, that given the information that Sue gave us, this is kind of a moving target. It's not a, we decide tonight what it should be and that works in the long term for every committee. So I think sort of addressing the idea that some things might work and we can decide that they work and some things don't work and that kind of thing. So I really like the idea of a subcommittee and I agree with Bryce. I think access to these committees has a lot to do with childcare, time of day Access to these committees has a lot to do with, um, childcare, time of day. Um, and just being able to afford to give your time to the city. Um, I think that's the reason we see. The people that we see on these committees, not that we shouldn't praise everyone who wants to come to us, but I think we might get a a bigger depth. Um, if we pushed some of those barriers out of the way, and then I saw Elise, um. Post up and it's her idea, but I think it's a fantastic idea, um, to talk about something like a break on municipal bills or things like that, that maybe. Aren't necessarily out of pocket, um, kinds of things for us, but are some things that we can do to offset. Um, the cost of time that these people put into it. So, um, that's just my two cents.
There, sorry, I lost my screen for a second. Um, all right, any any other comments? And at the moment, I cannot see you all, so speak up if anybody has another question or comment.
I I do.
Okay, Denise.
I I think historically, a long, long time ago, the city council was paid. With their, uh, reduction in their water bill, so it is something that had been done in the past before my time.
All right, very good. Um, all right. So the other thing I will say is that, um. Ike, um, so I think, and Doug can confirm this, but I think with the ad hoc committees, I I think. I was involved a lot with the recruitment of those, I think it's forty people. Um, and at some point, I'm gonna get to the end of my, uh, tapability, you know what I mean? So, uh, the more. People we get into the recruitment, et cetera, the better we will all be. So. Um, anyway, all right, um, any other comments at this moment?
Yeah, one from, uh, Counselor McBride.
Okay, Mike.
Yeah, so. I mean, I was just wondering, are we having troubles really filling the committees? And has anybody sat down to see if. Maybe we should streamline it and do we need to maybe get rid of some of the committees? Or can they can be combined, have two of them combined it maybe into one because they're similar?
Well, I'll I'll take a stab at that, I guess. Um, on the last recruitment, which we just finished, we we were, we had a wealth of applicants. Uh, we had twenty applications for five positions. So that really wasn't the problem. What what became more the question is, you know, how, what's the procedure? How do you determine who for which position and that kinda thing? Um, but that, but that isn't always the way, and I know Sue can attest to that, that. You know, we, sometimes we go begging and have to, you know, dig back in past applicants to to find somebody and. And that kinda thing, but certainly I think the subcommittee, I hope, would talk about things like, are there committees that can be combined? Um, you know, on based on the function and that kinda thing, and that that's gonna take, you know, staff input too, because. You know, we us may, we may look at it and say, well, could vertical housing be a part of affordable housing? And Doug may go. No, because of whatever. So that that we'd have to, you know, run by by staff and all, so.
So with committee recruitment, it's feast or famine. Um, we had twenty this fall. In the springs, Will had seventeen for one library position. In the past, I've done things like wear a giant sign around my necks, those volunteers needed. Uh, during Halloween, handing out candy, and that's how I trapped Brian Love to be on a committee. So, um. Uh, and and I've already started my spring recruitment, Rick, by asking, uh, an employee the other day, oh, you have a teenager. We have two students that are graduating. Um, would they like to be on planning commission? So, um, you know, it's, like I said, it's feast or famine. Um, sometimes we don't get a good turnout. Um, I I can't tell you why or why not. I mean, um. I am the only person who does this, so I do get some help from Lacey when we do recruitment. Sometimes people are just too busy. I mean, they they have individual lives, they have families to raise. Or they're trying to work, or they're just not interested. Um, my, my experience has been, and perhaps Doug can back this up. The interest in government waxes and wanes, sort of like the mood and moon and the tides. And this year has been a lot of interest in local government, uh, but there are some years not so much, so.
Thank you, Sue, for your work and Lacey as well and and helping you. Um, yeah, I wanna acknowledge that that work and idea I have that might create more work. Or we'll just maybe send it to the subcommittee and Mike, Mike, thank you as well for your comments, cause it caused me to think. I think we can all have good ideas, but ultimately we should go back to the current committee members and ask them like, what would help you? What would be barriers that would help keep you engaged? Um, if you had previously been interested but didn't for some reason, what were those reasons? How might we? Again, better serve you all as a as a city. It doesn't have to be, I think, a particularly, um, long or comprehensive survey. But just something to get a bit of feedback from current committee members of of what might help ease some of the burden, make it easier to to be involved.
Um, Mayor. Yes, but just if I may, and so just to keep this in mind is that. Oftentimes, for the things that we do out of community development, they're grant related, and so we come with. Grant requirements is that we have to have some type of committee involvement. Um, and I'm always cautious about overburdening the planning commission, given the volume of work that they already have. Some communities say, yeah, you know, anything that's related to land use and housing, they go to the planning commission. Um, but all of a sudden, then you could have a planning commission meeting multiple times a month just to try to keep up. And so again, it's that balancing and some of these grants, again, you know, maybe a year-long grant and a committee needs to meet four times. And so that's not necessarily a huge lift, but it's trying to find the right day and the time and meeting their family obligations to make that work.
I think just to add on to that, uh, you know, my understanding, and correct me, Doug, is that there are, you know, affordable housing, for instance. There are committees that we could use to sort of do what you, uh, you know, the combination, uh, what we were talking about. Uh, before of how do we minimize or or maybe streamline what we have. Affordable housing, though, just doesn't meet often enough to meet the requirements of the grants. And so while it could, you know, then it would be a question of. Changing the term, right? You know, as we're, you know, we're flying the the airplane, we we gotta rebuild it. And then it's a question of would the existing committee members be able or willing to serve in a me, in a environment where they meet monthly or, you know. More regularly to meet the grant requirements. And maybe that's something we wanna explore, because yes, it might take out a few ad hoc committees and. Minimize our need for volunteers, because I do think that's another challenge. Um, just the the number of folks engaged in Newburgh and or the, you know, the just the the population as a whole. At some point, you know, we're gonna run out of folks, uh, to a certain degree that it just haven't. You know, done it before and are willing, you know, and and so just that challenge of finding folks.
Right. Well, one thing we do in Newburgh is we volunteer. You can safely say that. Safely say we volunteer here. So, all right. Um, okay, it seems like we got some idea that the the subcommittee to discuss committees might be good. So, given that, now's the time to sign up. So I will do, I will participate. Anyone else? Who else? Elise, Denise, and Stephanie. Um, can we do that? How many can we have, uh, folks? Three, so we can have three.
I can back out.
You wanna be an alternate? How's about an alternate? Okay. All right, so we got, uh, Stephanie, Denise and Rick, right? Is that who we got? Okay.
Oh, wait, sorry. Uh, um, this isn't me necessarily trying to volunteer, cause I got lots of other things. But it is ironic that one of the recommendations that Sue had was to like reduce. Or spread some of the love, the ex officio stuff you have, and now you're like adding on another one. It just strikes me as a bit ironic. Um, so, you know, you're 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 a full grown man, you can make your own decisions. And I wonder if it might be wise to consider this as an opportunity to listen to the wisdom of Sue and not having another thing.
That's true. The the only thing that my only counter to that is is that I've been doing a lot of the recruiting. Uh, and I've been doing a lot of, and and so that's the only, that's where I could pro- probably have most input and. My day job, uh, runs volunteers. So between those two things, and and again, I will bow out and we've got an alternate. So if I have to bow out, um, I I will do so, but, um, I will try to work it in the schedule. But thank you, Bryce. I I appreciate that. And thank you, Sue. All right, so we got that. Um, anything else? All right, so, um, let's see. Josh, Duder, good evening, Josh. Um, one thing I did wanna mention, we, and I don't know if Sue mentioned this to you or anyone else, we were hoping to switch you with our with our accountant. Uh, for the audit presentation here in a little bit, uh, because he's got another city to to go to. So it it shouldn't take very long, but just if that's okay with you.
Let him go first?
Yeah, yeah, if we could.
Perfectly fine with me.
Okay, thank you so much. All right, so otherwise, folks, let's be back. What time is it? It's seven. Is it really? It's seven. Let's take, let's take, let's take, uh, five minutes and be back at seven oh five. All right, thank you. Don't, uh. All right, it looks like everybody is pretty much back.
I think so.
All right, good evening, everyone. This is the city council business session for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, good to see you all and to those who are tuning in, good evening. Um, Sue, if you could, uh, start us off with a roll call, please.
Uh, Counselor McBride.
Here.
Counselor Cofield.
Hey there.
Counselor, your Neil Holloman.
Here.
Counselor Martinez Plankarte.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
President.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
Counselor Finley. Um, I see that she's on, she may just be out of the room. Okay, Mr. Mayor, old president.
Thank you. Thanks so much. All right, let's, uh, the pledge of allegiance, please.
All right, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All righty, well, thank you. Um, well, a little bit of a change in our agenda for those who are following at home. Uh, we're gonna switch items four B and four A, so let's start out with the RCA for the annual audit presentation. Uh, Dan and Brad, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Uh, thanks for having me. Uh, some of you might not recognize me as I haven't presented since. I think it was in the Public Safety Building. Um, but I'm Dan Corland, the senior accountant, and I've got here for you, uh, comprehensive annual financial statements for. Uh, uh, year end June thirty, twenty twenty. And, uh, the three attachments are, uh, essentially in summer, the first three sections of. That document, which is linked below there. Um, and I have Brad with with us here to pre- to present. He's the auditor. Uh, audit partner and he's, go ahead and take it away, Brad.
Well, thank you, Dan. Um, yeah, uh, my name's Brad Beginheimer, uh, audit partner with the firm of Bolt Carlisle Smith. Which is now a division of the firm of Singer-Lewak. Uh, and we had once again the pleasure of serving as the city's auditors for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty. And we have issued our auditor's report on these financial statements. Which is what we consider to be an unmodified report. Which in a nutshell says, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position. Of the city and, uh, the changes in financial position for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty. Give you a few, uh, highlights of that. Uh, the city ended the year. With total assets and deferred outflows of two hundred and twenty-five million dollars. And that's split all pretty much fifty fifty. Um, governmental activities had ninety-nine million and, uh, business type activities had. A hundred and twenty, um, six million. In total assets for, uh, outflows, uh, total liabilities and deferred inflows were sixty-seven point five million. With governmental having twenty-eight million of that and, uh, business type activities having forty million of that. So the overall net position of the city, uh, at June thirty, twenty twenty is a hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. Uh, seventy-one million of governmental and eighty-seven million of business type activities. Now, the change in your overall net position was two point three million dollar increase. In, uh, the statement of i- in your net position. Uh, the governmental activities had a small decrease of one point four million. And the business type activities had an increase of three point seven million. And that's on total revenues of just under thirty-nine million dollars. Um, so we have, you know, overall positive growth in the, uh, net position of the city. Uh, we have, uh, you know, we haven't seen any significant decreases in revenues. Uh, if we were to consider the governmental funds for a moment. Uh, the, of course, the general fund is the most significant of all your governmental funds. It ended the year with fund balance of three point five million dollars, which. Is a decrease of about, uh, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So your general fund did have a decrease this year. And overall, your, uh, governmental fund balances decreased one point seven million dollars. Um, if you were though to go back, um. If you look back to year ended two thousand and sixteen. That year ended, you ended up, uh, with your governmental funds at just under ten million dollars. And at the end of June thirty, twenty twenty, they're at thirteen point four million. So over, you know, a five-year period, they have grown, uh, you know, almost three and a half million dollars. I mean, the three, three hundred and fifty, I'm sorry. Yeah, three point five million dollars. Um. So overall, you know, the ci- city continues to grow. Of course, twenty twenty is a little bit of a bump in the road for most people. Um, but we're obviously looking forward to, uh, better things to come in the future. And those business type activities that we talked about, so that's mainly your water and sewer systems. Uh, they respectively ended the year, uh, water with, uh, tot- net position of thirty-three million. And the wastewater add to have forty-one million. And both of those, uh, were increases from the prior year. Uh, the water fund increased one point three and the waste and the sewer fund increased, uh, one point two million. So your, uh, proprietary funds, your utility services, those increased, um, from the prior year. Now, if you're looking at the, the, it's a very large document, about, you know, a two-hundred-page document is your, uh, overall comprehensive annual financial report. But if you were to go to about page seventy-two. Uh, wanna highlight, actually, page seventy-three, will highlight a couple of things. Um, regarding the net pension liability for both the city's plan. And your participation in PERS. So on page seventy-three, there is a trend of, uh, six years. Ultimately, we'll have ten years as we've, uh, build out this schedule over time. But the end of, and and this is measured as of June thirtieth every year, the year prior, because it takes a while for the actuaries to do their job. But, um, the net pension liability measured at June thirty, two thousand and nineteen. Was thirteen point seven million dollars. And that is an increase from where we were in two thousand and fourteen, when we had nine point nine million dollars. So the net pension liability over time has been growing in the city's plan. At the same time, if you were to scroll, you know, go down a couple more pages. To, I, the schedule that's similar to that, that's your showing your share of the, uh, Oregon PERS liability. Uh, that is also been growing each year and currently is at eight point eight million dollars. So you have some very significant net pension liabilities. And I bring this up because at some point in time, these liabilities have to get funded with contributions by the city. And, um, obviously, we've already seen, you know, PERS rates going up. Uh, your actuarial rates that you're gonna be required to fund are going up, um, for the city's plan. These are gonna be some significant financial burdens for the city. Um, that you're gonna need to start, you know, thinking about and, uh, you know, at some point in time, my fear is. That cities such as Newburgh are gonna be positioned where you're gonna have to start, you know, weighing off funding that. While also trying to provide the services that you currently, uh, are providing. Um, I thi- I'm afraid that there's gonna be some very difficult choices ahead for, uh, city management and the city council. Um, as we deal with these very large pension liabilities going forward into the future. Um, there's a whole section that shows all the budget actual, uh, presentations. there's a whole section that shows all the budget actual uh, presentations. I'm not gonna go into that in any great detail unless you have some specific questions about it. Um, but one of the things that we do as auditors is we look at um, certain Oregon laws and regulations uh, that we're supposed to comment upon whether or not you uh, complied with them. And one of those is local budget law. And uh, as part of our, you know, audit work and our wor- look at uh, your compliance of specific Oregon laws, regulations, uh, we did not find any instances of non-compliance that need to be reported. So your budgetary was all spent, you know, within the appropriation categories that you uh, had established for uh, the nineteen-twenty year. The other thing that we talk about briefly in our report of, under the Oregon requirements, is we talk about internal controls. And of course, internal controls are uh, one of the things that auditors look at very closely, because we're wanting to make sure that uh, if there's any weaknesses, we wanna bring those to your attention. It also helps us plan the audit. Uh, the good news is we didn't identify any weaknesses that we needed to bring to your attention. Um, but we do consider the organization's internal controls every year. Um, as things change, um, and it looks like, you know, we've, you've already experienced some changes in the current uh, fiscal year. Of course, in nineteen twenty, we had changes due to everybody starting to do some more uh, remote working due to the pandemic. Uh, all those things were considered as part of our audit, though. Um, and the good news is, you know, the internal controls were able to be maintained throughout the time period of uh, the fiscal year. And at that, I guess I would open it up to any questions from city council if you have any regarding the audit um, or our role as the city's auditor.
Right. Questions, anyone? Okay. Um, uh, there we go, Mike.
Yeah. So I was just wondering, do you have a timeframe on when you think we might have to start uh, paying money into that fund, into the retirement, into PERS?
Well, you was a kind of, well, you look at what the PERS rates are already doing. I mean, we're seeing a lot of PERS rates, you know, increasing by, you know, anywhere from, you know, five to ten percent for different organizations. So, you know, when your PERS rates are going up at that rate, um, and I would expect your actuarial required contributions to your own plan be going up by similar amounts. And, you know, you're looking at the, the, the total amount of your, of what you're already contributing. Um, you know, a ten percent increase is gonna be a pretty good size increase. Um, you know, for example, uh, into your um, the city's plan, your contributions of this last year um, were just under one point four million dollars. Now, the actuary had said it should have been about uh, one point six million dollars. So you had a shortfall there in the city's plan of two hundred thousand dollars. Um, and you're already at a contribution rate of uh, almost forty percent for the covered payroll. So, you know, you start adding, you know, another, you know, hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars to that. You know, that's, that starts to, you know, really impact you. Uh, similarly with PERS, uh, you know, you had total contributions to PERS this last year of uh, just over a million dollars. Um, and, you know, that's on a covered payroll of uh, five point eight million dollars. So, you know, you're looking at some pretty significant contribution rates already to those. Um, so, you know, you think about if, if this next year you had um, you know, five hundred thousand dollars less to spend on other things that had to be being contributed to these uh, retirement plans. And you see similar type of growth each year into those contributions. It's gonna e- begin to eat into, you know, some of those other things that the city would like to be doing.
Other questions, comments, folks? I'm looking for hands. Okay. Well, I just, a couple of things. First off, uh, thank you, Brad and and Dan. So anyway, I've done, uh, anyway, uh, the point being, uh, from what I heard, we have aside the, the pension issue, of course, and that's uh, and obviously, that's not isolated to the city of Newburgh. That's um, you know, statewide, potentially nationwide. But hearing that there were no budget law issues, there are no material weaknesses, there are just no internal control issues. And I'd, I'd like to mention also, let's see if I can read this, from the RCA, and this is probably for those who are are listening at home. It states, I am pleased to point out that the city can proudly include in the June thirty, twenty twenty CAFR, the certificate of achievement of excellence in financial reporting for the June thirtieth, twenty nineteen statements for the fourth year in a row. So, um, again, uh, you know, uh, Dan is the last man standing. Uh, thank you for all you have done. And uh, well, well, I think we're gonna see more of you, Dan, as we go forward. I, I'm just a guest, though. Um, all right. Anybody else? Any other, any other comments? Okay, I think you need a motion, though, right? You'd like a motion to accept the audit.
Uh, yeah, the staff recommendation is to uh, by way of motion to accept the auditor's report and the comprehensive annual financial statements for the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty.
Do I have that motion? Mike?
I'm on.
And do we have a second?
Any second. Oops, sorry, Jules.
All right. Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor signify by raising your left hand. Looks uh, unanimous, Sue. All right. Um, awesome. Thank you. Thank you, uh, Brad. Thank you so much, Dan. Again, thank you. Thank you so very much. Um, we are fortunate to have a, I don't know, clean audits. That's good stuff. So thank you.
Yes.
And thank you for the
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Yep, of course. And and thank you for the warning on the pension as well. All right. Uh, moving on, let's um, on to item, what is four A. Uh, Josh Duder from the Chamber of Commerce. Josh, first off, again, thank you for your flexibility this evening and greatly appreciate it.
Of course. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Um, I'll give a quarter two quarterly report for the Chamber of Commerce's visitor center. Um, Sue, there's a, a document, the, the report numbers itself. I did, did Doug provide that to you? Now, that's in the staff report, Sue.
That's in the staff
Okay, okay. If you have, if everybody had, everybody has access to it. Um, I thought last time that I gave a quarterly report, we sort of left that up there for twenty minutes and and we dwelled on it for a bit. Um, twenty twenty wasn't good for the visitor center as far as numbers go. Um, I don't think we need to sit and stare at the numbers for too long, but what I can say is that um, in quarter two, we only had seven visitors. However, the visitor center has been open uh, every day that we can be open since, since the fires, uh, since the smoke was gone and that it was healthy for people to go outside again. Um, so we did see a significant drop uh, on, on that report, a significant drop in the amount of money that we uh, applied towards personnel and overhead. So our total expenses um, were, were down uh, almost twenty thousand dollars as you look at it. And what that's due to is on quarter one, we were still paying off um, some tenant improvement fees from our move from our previous location, from the Chamber of Commerce to a downtown location to service the visitor center. So we, we uh, used uh, funding to help cover the cost of turning this space into a visitor center, uh, friendly space. Um, what I wanna do tonight is I wanna take a look at uh, give you, start, start to tell you a little bit about what a chamber of commerce is and and tell you how the, what we provide as a visitor center is a service. And so that the two are not, there's some synonymity and I, and I'd like to separate the two from being the same place and sort of let you know that a chamber is, is one location and an organization and that the visitor center is a service. Um, so the history of a, a, a chamber of commerce actually goes back well before seventeen sixty-eight. Uh, so it goes back to the times of the Hansiattic League and, and um, you know, merchants sort of banding together to create law and organization around the laws of commerce so that businesses can survive and make sure that they follow along with city law. Um, in, in the fifteen hundreds, there was the sort of the first official um, chambre de commerce, which you would find in the city of Marseille. I think that was fifteen ninety-nine was the first official chamber of commerce. And the, and the concept was to no longer work independently of the city or of, of the government to, but to work hand in hand with city government, uh, county government and and state government to make sure that you were following along with the, the most up-to-date uh, laws and and tax, and tax applications. So the first chamber of commerce that the United States saw was in seventeen sixty-eight. And these are, these are important tenants to take a look at. The four key tenants to a chamber of commerce are to promote commerce, to support industry, to resolve business disputes and to support or oppose laws. Those are all things that you'll still find that uh, your chamber of commerce does uh, here in the city of Newburgh. Next, please. Thank you. Um, so some of the earliest references to a chamber of commerce go as far back as nineteen fourteen, when the city hall building uh, was constructed of bricks from the Edwards Brick Company. Um, but there are even earlier mentions of a commerce club. So in this image, you'll see a, a sign, a Newburgh sign. It was an entrance to the city of Newburgh, and it was donated to the city by the commerce club. Uh, and so it's, as far back as the early nineteen hundreds, that the Chamber of Commerce and Commerce Club have, have um, worked hand in hand with, with city officials uh, and and made sure that we have the best interests of the city in our hearts and in our mind. Uh, I have ledgers and and documents uh, that prove, you know, uh, funds were coming in and out of the Chamber of Commerce to help local businesses. Um, you know, as far back as the nineteen twenty, nineteen twenty-one. And we've been in sort of, so, so prior to, prior to the way we operate now, we used to actually operate within city hall, within the building itself and uh, use some space there. But in the late seventies and eighties, they moved to an independent, an independent model. As far as I can ascertain, that's about when it happened. And so um, they, they started uh, getting public locations, uh, renting spaces instead of, instead of staying within a city, a city buildings. Next slide, please. So recently, I gave a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce's Board of Directors. And it was a really long and drawn-out presentation. I won't do that to you tonight. Um, but there were five takeaways from it that I did wanna focus on. So these are the direct, this is the direction that the Chamber of Commerce will be focused on uh, in, in twenty twenty-one and going forward. Um, we'll be working on membership, and this is incredibly important to you when you consider budgeting. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce's budget should, should operate uh, mostly off of membership dues so that we can follow through on all the things that the chamber does for the, for the community and for our business members. So I'll be focusing on a membership drives to increase those numbers and to retain members that eve- even though they may have had um, as, as bad as twenty twenty as anybody else, we're gonna do whatever we can uh, run through walls, bend over backwards to make sure that businesses feel valued and that we help them um, continue to exist going into twenty twenty-one. Uh, well, we're gonna work on networking. Uh, the greeters, everyone's familiar with uh, the eight o'clock uh, Friday morning greeters that the chamber does. We're gonna try to get together and do, you know, COVID pending, but we're gonna try to do uh, once a month uh, events called a chamber after hours, sort of a happy hour, get together, networking event. We're gonna try to do a golf tournament this year. See, see how that goes if, if, um, you know, if, if everyone's health and safety is paramount, but these are, these are concepts that we are coming up with. Uh, you know, with uh, optimism in mind. Um, we're gonna focus on the economic development of, of our, of our community. So that means being in a position not just to collect dues and have golf tournaments, but to actually help uh, brand-new businesses get started up by providing them resources like Sedcor or Oregon Business and getting them in communication with banks for loans or transferring loans into grants um, through PPP or whatever it means that we can. Um, you know, if I have to do a bunch of research to help people out, that's what I'll do. Um, government affairs, so we have advocacy as well. Um, we'll continue to uh, beef up our government affairs committee, which uh, at one point was only three people, but we're already up to five. This is really good when it's all volunteers. So five, six, if I can get seven people that are interested in government affairs, I can start to get some opinions that we can put out in a newsletter and start to help our local businesses uh, make informed decisions on how to operate. And of course, we'll be working with um, uh, other local invested um, people that deal with property um, to help improve infrastructure or make uh, decisions on infrastructure uh, within the city limits of Newburgh and the surrounding areas. So uh, the chamber is also a member of the, the uh, the Neds Group. So um, we work with the city. We work uh, hand in hand with other organizations that have the city's best interests at heart. Next slide, please. So when I say that the chamber has been open, I know that it's hard to imagine the value, uh, if you divided eighteen thousand dollars by seven visitors, it's really hard to imagine that there's a value proposition in there for the city of Newburgh. What what we offer is a contracted service. We've been in place and whether it was a thousand people that showed up or only seven people that showed up, everybody would have had access to the same services. So from our perspective, there's, these are the things that we can provide and we will provide uh, as long as we have a visitor center present. Um, so for potential visitors, not all of them go online. Some of them call ahead and they have questions for recommendations. What is your favorite restaurant? Um, can there be kids in this restaurant? Uh, how late is, how late is that winery open? So they, I, I field phone calls every day. Um, they ask for maps and other guides to, uh, to be mailed ahead of their visit. Um, and to see if there's something that they remembered from their childhood when they visited with their family, is that still there? There is, you know, there was this antique shop my mom liked. Is that, that was there twenty years ago? Is it still there? So they call the Chamber of Commerce or the Visitor Center for answers on those types of things. Um, we're reactive to spontaneous visits. Sometimes people just get in their car and they go. They don't always know where they're going, but sometimes they just end up in a place. Or sometimes they think, you know what, I went to Newburgh, you know, I went out that way, and then they stop in Newburgh on the way to a winery or tasting room, and they're looking for lunch. Not all of it's pre-planned. So we're reactive to spontaneous visits. We're already here. The Chamber of Commerce, our doors are open. Um, we're helping businesses. I'm already sitting at my desk, so I'm here to help people as they come in the door. There is, I'm all, I'm smiling and I'm here to help people. Um, we have, I have a menu guide. Uh, pointing to it, that doesn't help you, but I have uh, probably, I would, I would venture to guess twenty, twenty-five different menus from restaurants from all over Newburgh and uh, and our surrounding communities. So people say, hey, I'm looking for Italian or I'm looking for, you know, uh, bar food, whatever it is, I can, they can look at it right there. Um, public restroom, you know, sometimes people just gotta stop and use the restroom, right? You can here. We've partnered with lodging, uh, lodging and wineries, not, not just in Newburgh, but people will come through Newburgh. So if they go out to a winery and they're gonna go have a tasting, they gotta come back for dinner because they don't have restaurants up at the winery. So they're gonna stop here and ask for advice. Um, we share the city's narrative. So I'm also a member of the Historical Society. I've given presentations on the Berrien Festival and the, and the Berrien Society, as well as the history of the chamber. Um, and I'm, in the Historical Society works with the Hoover uh, Minhorn House to, to share the story of, of Hoover and um, you know, the the, the narrative of Newburgh, so that when people visit, it isn't like, I don't know, you know, enjoy your, enjoy your restaurant. Um, we actually, I, I send people, you know, take a walk that direction and go look at those signs that are in front of the buildings in Newburgh. This isn't just a bunch of brick buildings. There's an actual story here. This is one of the most amazing little towns that you'll find outside of Portland. Um, you look at all of these, look at all of these great, you know, things to, and we talk about the story of of all the entrepreneurs that helped assemble uh, Newburgh. So they stop here and they're gonna hear those stories. And, and here's a really interesting thing that I think is overlooked, and it's cross-promoting visitor centers. Um, so in the three and a half, I'm going to, I guess I'm going to my fourth year working uh, in the Chamber of Commerce. And in that time, I've attended uh, conferences, state conferences, um, west, west coast conferences, uh, visitor centers and chambers of commerce. And one of the things that I think we overlook is the power of those connections and the ability for my chamber to promote. If people come in here to the visitor center and they wanna go out to the beach, I can promote Cannon, Cannon Beach. Or I can promote seaside organs. You might think, well, how does that help Newburgh if you're promoting people to go out to the coast? The thing is, they're doing the same thing. So if they have visitors that are out at, at the coast and they're saying, well, where should I stop on the way back in? They're gonna, they're gonna hand them the guide to Yam Hill, Yam Hill Valley or to, or to Newburgh. And I make those types of connections in, in Tillamook, or I make those types of connections right on the other side of the hill in Sherwood or Wilsonville. So we have a really good network, uh, a working network of chambers of commerce and visitor centers that we cross-promote each other. Um, we, we talk to the people as they come in our door and we have a customer service um, perspective on finding out what they need and and giving it to them. um perspective on finding out what they need and and giving it to them um and making sure that, you know, we can put them in the right direction. Where do you stop for gas before you go to, you know, before you head out that direction? So all those types of questions we can answer here. Last slide, please. So our plan for twenty twenty one from a chamber's perspective is to work to keep local businesses alive. This has been a really tough year for everybody, and we see a lot of businesses struggling. Um, so our our, every day that I show up to work, it's it's a hundred percent full throttle. Like, I'm on the phone or I'm in different meetings. I'm in different conversations, learning more information, which banks are providing which loans. Um, what's coming new, uh what's, you know, what's coming down the pipeline from the county or from the state? Um, what's new coming from the feds? I'm hearing from the US Chamber of Commerce and from the State Chamber of Commerce about how to help our businesses out. And I'm also getting out of my office on days that um my my uh part-time employee is in here. If I have a chance to go out and I can walk into two or three businesses in a day safely, mask on, following the rules, but I I wanna find out what's going on with them and how they're doing and what they need. Um, so I make sure that I get out and and I I stop in downtown businesses and I drive out out of the downtown core and I go talk to, you know, businesses, you know, on the end, like uh uh from Russia with Love Coffee or, you know, back the other, you know, back the other direction. I'll go to Red Hills Market in Dundee or you know, every day it's it's lunch somewhere to just touch base with the business and see how they're doing. Um, for twenty twenty one, we uh are gonna publish and distribute a high quality city map with points of interest and references. So I'll work with the Historical Society to make sure that we um mark historical reference points on the map so that people can follow the narrative and follow along on their map. It's a, it's a walking guide. Um, so we're gonna work with the Historical Side Society to launch walking tours from the visitor center, and they'll wind their way through downtown and um end up at the the Hoover Minhorn Museum. So then that way, um they could stop with all those historical signs. They could see the restaurants we have. They can see the shops and the boutiques that they can go into. And it helps promote sales, but also helps promote the narrative, and I hope that it becomes a a good experience and it brings um them back another time. Um, we're gonna return to annual events, as I mentioned, if we can safely. We've got an idea for uh, you know, um bringing that golf, a golf tournament back. But I think more than that, um historically, the Chamber of Commerce is the starting point for the Berrien Festival, Farmer Roo, the Old Fashioned Festival, um Brews and Barbecue, and and Taste Dundee, all of these events that ring a bell for some of you. Um, they all started with the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, they might have ended up with other organizations at some point. But these were all Chamber of Commerce um seeds that, you know, grew into larger events that that are uh they they're good for the community, but also good for drawing uh business into our community. Um, and those are something that the the Chamber can help, but that's also something where we're bringing visitors in and and we're and we're selling the narrative of Newburgh in a way um that you just can't, you can't entirely get online. And and this is what I, uh, this is my last point. And that we have been and we continue to be open and we we service our visitors. I'm I'm here every day. Um, it's been, it's been slow, but we've been here to do what the city has contracted us to do. We promote tourism, history, and community and business of our city. And um, and I hope that these people that aren't coming right now, they they will come to us in twenty one, twenty twenty one, twenty-two, we'll be here for them. Um, so we'll be here to help promote Newburgh. So that's what I've got. Thank you.
All right, um, any questions for for Josh? Anyone? Here you go. Uh, Josh, thank you, right? Thank you so much. Thank you for, you know, giving the history and and a little fleshing out of you know, of of what you do beyond that, and the history has been, has been very useful. I guess I have, I have one question. So and it's um, you know, one that I know has been talked about a bit, but so we've got, we've got the Chamber, we've got downtown, the Downtown Coalition, and we've got uh Visit Newburgh. How do you see the three organizations working together?
Um, right now, we have space here. We've offered it to them rent free to uh to the DMO as well as to the Downtown Coalition. Uh, unfortunately, they have a deal that can't be beat with CPRD at the moment. Um, so they're, they're currently rent free in their location, and I don't think that they're moving into our location. I have, I have suspicions as to why. Um, but that's not information that serves anybody any good right now. Um, but I think a a lot of uh the reasons why it's not happened already is is tied directly to funding. Um, so I mean, that's the elephant in the room as far as I'm concerned. It has everything to do with funding and it has nothing to do with intention. Um, so the space is available. We're willing to, you know, work with them. Um, I am currently working with the Downtown Coalition to light up Newburgh. So uh, they've just uh changed uh um their their executive director is now Polly Peterson. And I'm working with Polly to get out to start stringing lights on buildings outside of the downtown area. Uh, we are gonna not just light up downtown, but we're gonna light up all of Newburgh together. Our two organizations will work together. Uh, we're also working hand in hand with the Historical Society to provide tours and information about the city as this, as far as uh uh hi- historic tourism is concerned. I think that's a a really good selling point. Um, the 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 trolley tours that they do on um on New and Young Day, uh those we're we're discussing as possibly being a pick up and drop off site for those. So uh, we're working with the organizations that are are interested in working with us.
Thank you. Speaking lighting up Newburgh, I I know that people were out putting lights on the front of Providence today, actually. So I do know that. So the lights are spreading. That's cool. Um, all right, Josh, just and for anybody listening at home who may not be familiar with the funding, uh, and I'll give a brief intro, and if any can elaborate, it's it's basically a quite, it's transient lodging tax money uh that funds these visitor promotions. Uh, and obviously, we've not had as many visitors to Newburgh and to our hotels and resort uh as we have in the past with COVID. So um, so that's it. And I don't know if I, if that's a quick brush, if anybody wants to elaborate, but but that's it. So there are, there are limited dollars that uh that have, there's a proportioning between the general fund for the city and then uh the amount that needs to be distributed to visitor supporting industries for for tourists. So, yeah. Okay. Any other questions or anything for Josh? Okay. Josh, thank you, right? Thank you for all your good works and and all you do to make uh Newburgh better. So thank you.
Absolutely. Have a good evening, everybody.
You too. All right, uh, looks like we're on item five now, the City Managers Report. Uh, Dan, that's your cue.
That's my cue, and I'm actually, uh, this is sort of the the typical report that I would give, the long uh report. I'm actually gonna skinny it up and really just focus on the work that I've done. Um, and we will post the larger document with all the various departments uh work on our website. Um, so kind of working down my list, it's been a busy uh couple weeks. It's one of those things, I was looking back at my calendar and and just kind of shaking my head that we we met on the fourth, uh, the fifth, uh, Kezia and I were able to interview a couple of folks uh for the Finance Department Assistants. Um, we were able to land on on a company and and actually have completed it in an agreement, and they've started all in two weeks. And so bit of an urgency there, um, but we're really happy with what we've got uh lined up. Um, we have an agreement with Marina and Company uh to do uh support. And um, our our agreement actually covers three kind of main uh areas, big buckets, one being operations, ongoing operational support, one being budgetary support, um, and the last one being an assessment of our needs going forward. Um, so trying to take advantage of what we have as an opportunity, a bit of a uh a gap in uh in our leadership uh to assess the department and think about the future and where we're going. Uh, how finance serves the other departments, how it serves um leadership and and the council and and frankly, you know, how uh finance fits with our other administrative or internal or central services, whatever your preferred definition of the folks who who support uh other folks in the city. Um, and so, you know, the assessment will be a critical part. Uh, we're on the already working down the path on that. Uh, as I said, there, we're already doing support for operations. And then uh the budget portion is nearly ready. We're just looking, I'm actually looking on my uh computer right now at a uh set of dates for the uh budget process for this year to try and get that kicked off. And we're already sort of tasked Marina with working on on forecasting and those kinds of things. And so I think they've rolled up their sleeves and are really diving in to help uh stabilize the situation, but also to to move us forward. Um, our primary point of contact, who I think you will probably meet and see, is a guy named Rob Moody. Um, Rob has spent a considerable career in a local government finance, uh working both four cities as a finance officer. Um, he worked for the DOWs, Sherwood, and Wilsonville. Um, but he's also then gone and led uh auditing practice for a CPA firm in the Portland area and has for the last couple of years been a consultant with Marina uh doing this kind of work. And so um, I, one of the things that drew me to them was really his uh varied experience and, you know, a a good bedside manner for an accountant. And so again, I think you'll see uh him a few times. And I think that honestly, you know, as we go through the transition, I think it's helpful to have somebody who's who's as capable as Rob. So uh, there'll be other folks in his team involved with the city as well, doing an assessment and some of the other work, but um just wanted to kind of give you that information. Um, you know, also spent, and and I guess before I leave that, you know, I'm trying to categorize here. So uh that in my mind is customer service oriented goal number one. Um, so, you know, related uh goal number one, uh working with James, who's on the screen and uh has been uh already a really helpful addition to the team and his colleagues at Miller and Nash uh really trying to do informational meetings. We just had a bit of a brain dump from our community development and public works folks uh for a few hours. So you can imagine their brains uh afterwards uh are overflowing, but uh just trying to make sure that our our legal support is up to speed on issues that are coming up for the city uh ongoing and um and things we've we've got on our plans for the next couple of years or and, you know, just sharing that information. Um, also working with uh other folks at Miller and Nash on uh HR uh support, uh some of the the policy review and and labor, uh, you know, just planning uh the year ahead when it comes to uh bargaining. And so been an awesome addition already and uh really happy to have James on board. Um, also working with Sue, who is also on the screen, sort of, there she is. Um, to do scheduling, what we've been working on and may need a little additional information is the list of work session topics that y'all gave us. Um, we're working through scheduling that initial uh tranche of uh work sessions. We're probably into April, I think, at this point. Um, but I think there was a few questions as to what uh detail on some of those items. And so uh we'll circulate those uh questions we have for everyone's feedback and and just trying to get a little more detail. And I guess I would say that that is also, I think, customer service. Um, my last customer service item was um actually just an update on the Police Chief Search, which I think has been something the newspaper has been interested in. I know uh various community members as well. Um, you know, we're working forward on that. Uh, we've got a a timeline, which I think we're already uh, you know, as I said, working on the the initial stages of that recruitment. Uh, what we're doing is uh building out some surveys and and information gathering. Um, we're going to be reaching out to all of you counselors, sorry, not everyone who's watching, but all all of you counselors uh and include your feedback. Uh, so I think schedule one-on-one meetings for you with our recruiter uh just to to gather some ideas as to what you would look for in the future Police Chief and the Police Department as a whole. Um, but we're also doing outreach to the community, uh, community groups. Uh, we are planning a survey and um all kinds of other things like that to re- really try to gather a well-rounded amount of information um and a sense for what the community would like to see in in the Police Chief. Um, the intent, the goal we have for time is uh mid February to post that job. And so uh kind of working backwards from that, we've got a lot to do, uh a lot of outreach. And so again, we'll be reaching out to schedule those uh those one-on-one meetings with council. Um, related to that, um, I guess moving to goal number two, DEI, um, just wanted to share uh an opportunity that Mayor and I had, which was, I think, super informative and really um, just a cool opportunity. I I want to thank the school district for inviting us. Um, they have a Hispanic parent group uh that meets uh monthly and uh was able to talk to that group uh for a little while about what they'd like to see around uh police and Police Chief. And you're just really an interesting conversation and honestly, one that I think um it opened my eyes to a couple of issues, but also uh just a really neat opportunity to get feedback from a group that, you know, honestly, I don't see uh very often and and, you know, these meetings are or don't hear from directly. And so just an avenue of communication that I hope we can keep open. Um, the other uh somewhat related thing was that uh along with Mayor Rogers, again, uh, the Equity Task Force, due to scheduling, had a couple meetings in the last couple of weeks. And uh, or I think is very close to um doing some outreach around um city services as a whole and ways that uh members of our Latinx community may uh, you know, see opportunity for our improvement at the city. And something that I I'm hoping, you know, staff is is open to that feedback, um, you know, hoping we'll gather some good um feedback that we can use to um to tweak the way that we provide services and just be more conscious of uh the needs of our entire community. Um, that is actually my report for for now, and I'll leave it there if there are any questions.
All right, questions? Anyone? I don't see any hands. All right, all right. Up, there we go.
You know, I always got questions. You just gotta pick and choose when you.
You got that slow trigger. You got that slow trigger. You're full.
Yeah, you gotta give space for other people. Um, uh, around the the DEI, uh, last time you'd mentioned that you were in conversation with the consultant who's working. Um, I know that for a while, I mean, you've talked about, you know, um, it just being a a process. Um, so I'm wondering if there have been any conversations around timelines. Um, I believe that there was a, in the initial agreement, um, I think like a midpoint check-in or some sort of presentation around findings. Um, so I don't know if if there's any information around that. Uh, but especially as we begin to get into big conversations, whether it's around Police Chief and eventually we'll talk about budgeting and other things. Um, any information at all would be incredibly helpful to take into account.
Yeah, I, and thank you actually for calling that out. I um was negligent in in that one. I, we did have a conversation. Uh, our consultant and I uh over the last couple of weeks, and um, we are at the midpoint. Um, she's currently scheduled. She's kind of gave me the, I think I'll be done by the end of February. Um, and so put her on the, on the hot seat. If I'm gonna put a date and I'm gonna put you on the calendar. And so she is scheduled for a work session or we'll figure it out, a presentation to uh council on the fifteenth of uh March. And so, you know, hopefully enough time for her to prepare uh, you know, some findings, you know, presentation and all those things. Um, and still have a little bit of wiggle room there, uh should things go a little longer than she expected. But I did ask her as well. Um, you know, that's essentially the final presentation, final report. Uh, I asked her for some midpoint uh recommendations, exactly what you were saying. You know, I I very much would like to have, you know, as we build out a work plan for city staff for the year and as we're uh thinking as about budget items, uh, I asked her for those two items. One, you know, what's gonna take me some time and and things I should program for uh that aren't necessarily cost drivers, but you know, what else i- is gonna add to our, that's my budget and what should I be aware of? Uh, so she was gonna provide me a shortlist of that before that presentation in March.
Uh, as a, that's wonderful and and wise. Um, as a follow-up, um, have you heard of anything or have any sort of idea of what might need to potentially be included before we release the job description for the uh Chief of Police? I think you said mid-February was the goal?
Yeah, mid-February is the goal. Um, I have not uh seen a draft, you know, and so I think, like I said, we're very much in the beginning stages of uh building that. Uh, what I expect is that uh Heather Gantz, who's our recruiter, is gonna do the majority of that communication with folks and synthesize it for us and provide that uh synthesis in a draft position profile. Um, so I think we're probably a month out from having that information, just based on, you know, the need to for her to conduct all the interviews and and all that stuff. I mean, I, we just haven't gathered uh feedback on it yet. I, you know, aside from the folks who call or, you know, express their opinion, um, you know, who who've expressed their opinion to me for the more or less year that I've worked here. Um, so in an organized manner, we have not gathered the feedback.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? Comments? Right, uh, thank you, Dan. Thank you very much. All right, um, next on the agenda, Sue, I think we we have someone hopefully waiting to make public comment.
No, they have.
No, they have not joined the meeting. So I, I, I don't know, she registered and I sent her the information and I, I don't see her on the attendee side. So no public comment tonight.
Okay, well, hopefully, hopefully next time. What about issue tracker, Dan? Anything on the issue tracker?
No, I need to talk to James about the two items for legal. That's the only thing that triggered for me.
Right, okay, thank you. All right, it looks like we're on now to a public hearing. So let's go, this is a quasi judicial land use public hearing. So the hearing is now open. The purpose is Resolution 2021 3714, a resolution recommending Yamhill County approve a proposed winery and tasting room at 3004 Northeast Zimry Drive, Yamhill County Tax Map and Lot R 3209 02500. All right, so this is then a call for abstentions, bias, ex parte contact and objections to jurisdiction, anyone? All right, hearing none. I think I'm now in my script and says, city attorney legal announcements. James, is that, is that your cue then?
Mr. Mayor, may I make one clarification? This is a legislative hearing, not quasi judicial, so we do not have any of the state required language to read into the record.
My mistake, sorry.
No worries, no worries.
James does not have anything to read into.
That's correct.
All right. Dial that back, let's dial that back legislative, so I don't have my cheat sheet in front of me. So I'm going to open this legislative hearing. How's about that?
Thank you, Mayor. I can take it from here.
Do it, that would be, you just saved me, thank you.
Thanks. So as the mayor indicated, what we have is a legislative hearing. We have an intergovernmental agreement with Yamhill County. So the particular parcel in question is outside of the city limits, but is within the urban growth boundary. It's up on Zimry Drive, just to the north of the Allison Inn and Spa. So the county received an application for a conditional use and a design review to turn the residence into a wine tasting brew. And so they informed the applicant, no, they need to first come to the city. So this is a requirement, the city hold a legislative hearing. The council provides a recommendation via resolution back to the county. And then the county will finish doing the land use process. So you do not make a final decision in this case. You're only making a recommendation to the county. The site in question has a single-family residence. It has a garage, the garage would be converted into storage and a kitchen. It would use house as a tasting room. So there's some minor modifications that would be done to the structure. There would also be some additional parking that would be added onto the east side of the garage. And there would be a drive aisle that would lead back to that parking area, which is about 45 feet by 45 feet in dimensions. It's pretty straightforward. I should enter the entire staff report into the record, so it includes the findings. In the findings, what we're looking at is would the proposed activity preclude future urbanization of that particular parcel, which is 4.73 acres? And there's about a 1.76 acre winery, I mean vineyard, actually located on the property at this time. And so in Exhibit C of your findings, we did the analysis and concluded that it does not preclude future urbanization of that property. When I say future urbanization sometime into the future, don't know when that would occur. And so we found that it complied with Section 1 and Section 2 that are outlined in the findings of your application. There's a map that shows you where the site is located and you have the full application that was submitted to the county is also in that particular proposal. Staff would recommend that council adopt Resolution 2021 3714. I know Megan Lille, representing Rain Dance Vineyards, which is the applicant, was intending to show up. But Sue, I don't know if she is online or not.
I have promoted her to a panelist and Ken Austin is also on as a panelist.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, good evening, Ken, good evening, Megan. Would you like to add anything to what Doug just provided?
What I would like to add is thank the city of Newburgh and the council people for all their hard work. I have forgotten how hard sitting through these meetings was as a prior times. But we're hoping to move, move our current tasting room a little closer into actually my father's home that when he passed away, we ended up purchasing. And my wife and I are very excited about it. We foresee a lot of outdoor space for people to enjoy the scenery, the gardens and the vineyards. And thank you for your consideration.
Cue, all right, any, any questions for Doug, anyone? Okay, I will, I will just say one, well, a couple of things. If you don't know this, where this location is, it's absolutely beautiful. It's right above, it's right above the Allison. It's beautiful. Actually, when I first moved, here's trivia, when I first moved to Newburgh, the house next door to, to Ken's father's house was where we first rented and then moved up onto Bell Road. So it's a very beautiful, it's a beautiful location and will be addition. The, and Ken, I will say this and Doug, I'll say this as well. My only concern is those are county roads. Bell Road is very heavily traveled, so is Zimry, so is Aspen. This has nothing to do with this application because that's really not our jurisdiction. It's more that I would like to hear from the county commissioners as to future plans for when that becomes a part of the city. I heard today from one of the county commissioners that that is actually in the works. But if there was a way to tag that to say, what will happen to this, to the condition of those roads when they are brought into the city and whose responsibility is it? Would be the only thing for me. But I did hear something positive about that. And apparently they're in touch with our public works to get a list of that is what I heard today. Of those particular streets that are in the UGB and will eventually be in city limits. Any other questions or comments, folks? Okay, any other thing or can we entertain a motion, Doug?
You could entertain a motion, Mayor.
Okay, I would be entertained by a motion then, folks.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 2021-3714.
And a second by Elise. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by raising your left hands. And it looks like we got unanimous, Sue. All right, well, thank you, thank you. And Ken and Megan, good luck with the project. And we'll have to come and visit you there at some point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to item 8A. This is Shahealem Park and Recreation District, the 2021 Oregon Communities' Paths Grant Support Letter and Funding Match Request. Doug, I think that's you.
Thank you, Mayor. So Doug Ruck's Community Development Director. So we've been in discussions with Shahealem Park and Recreation District for a while now. This actually goes back to an earlier grant in back in 2015 that the city supported for CPRD as part of the Connect Oregon Program to build a segment of trail from Industrial Parkway to, to River Street. And since then, we've had a series of conversations with ODOT. Actually, Paul was there. And Don Clemens was there, ODOT was there. We did a walk around along River Street and down under the bypass and so forth, looking at the potential alignment for that trail. So ODOT came out with their 2021 Oregon Communities' Paths Grant Program. And CPRD reached out to the city requesting a letter of support. And so as I've included in your packet, I won't hit all the details, but hit some highlights. This particular path would be about 7,300 lineal feet in length. That would have a little less than a 700-foot-long bridge that would cross over Hess Creek. So think of going from the end of Industrial Parkway down to the bypass, go through the gate, then paralleling the north side of the bypass, going over to Wynewski Street, then connecting with the path that exists between Wynewski and River Street, and then the section down River Street to 14th Street. There are currently two sections of the path for the bypass that are in place. River to Wynewski and from college to the end of the cul-de-sac on Weatherly Way is part of development of the bypass. There was also a path that was constructed along Springbrook Road, so from Highway 219 up to Oregon 99W. So this path would put a, or complete a missing link in that particular component of it. I've noted in your staff report that part of this path would be in the riverfront district. So we've identified that, there's lots of paths and trails and open space. This would eventually connect with the esplanade that we have identified in our riverfront plan. It's always important to note, when you look at grant applications, is, you know, the supporting elements that they're looking for. So I put in your report that based on the riverfront plan, you know, we're looking at 339 additional residential units, single-family and multifamily in the riverfront area. And we could see up to about 1.5 million square feet of industrial and commercial space in the riverfront area. The draft of the letter that I prepared, I shared with CPRD before we did put this in the packet to make sure that we got some feedback from them. They were supportive of that particular letter, just kind of outlining elements that I just talked about. The application also identifies in its draft form, some match contribution. And that was in the title for this particular report. So under your fiscal impact, we have not identified specifically the match amount that CPRD is looking for from the city. We do know the project is about a little over 2.4 million, close to 2.5 million. That match amount is 30%, which would be about 742,000. And I noted that over the calendar year of 2020, for the SDCs, parks SDCs that we collect for CPRD, is that amount was about $428,000. We have Casey Crichton here tonight from CPRD and Paul Agremus from Greenworks, who is the consultant for CPRD to provide some comments.
Thank you, Doug. Yes, just to echo what Doug said earlier, in some ways, this is the culmination of over decades worth of work between CPRD and the city. CPRD coordinated very closely with ODOT during the design of Phase 1 of the bypass. So the 12-foot concrete sidewalk or pathway that's there on the north side that Doug described earlier, that's a direct result of the coordination between CPRD and ODOT. And even the service road going to their stormwater facility is graded at 5%, so it's ADA accessible. So this is, you know, the culmination of a lot of long-term planning. And this is part of a desire to connect Newburgh to Dundee in the long term. So this would be Phase 1. And the key piece, as Doug mentioned, is crossing Hess Creek. It's a long crossing for this to be effective as a commuter route. A bridge is the desirable way to go. We looked previously at alternatives to have a shorter bridge. It requires a lot of grading, a lot of switchbacks to get down because there's a fair drop into the Hess Creek Canyon. So this will provide better safety because of lines of sight. It will provide for a safer route in terms of just being accommodating faster commuter cyclists. And it opens up because of the bikeway on the other side of 219. It connects the neighborhood to Fred Meyer, to Providence, to PCC and other employment areas. So that's one of the real emphases for ODOT is connecting people to their workplace, potential workplaces. That's my thumbnail overview. I'm happy to take additional questions.
Questions, folks? Right, Mike?
So the 742,000, that's 30%, are we splitting that, is that what you're asking, between CPRD and the city? Or is that, or is that 742,000 that the city pays out and also send them out for the park district?
That match, the 30% match is the total match. And I know there's been conversation between the city and CPRD. I don't know how that's going to be apportioned. Doug probably is more current on where the status of that is.
I've had a conversation with our Public Works Department, with engineering, about do we have funds available? And the response that I got back is, right now, our funds are committed and we don't have excess funds to be able to provide for a match.
Good, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few comments. This project, I know Paul was, he started it back in 2009, I believe, the Heritage Strategic Trail Plan. And this is kind of an ongoing thing that I believe is very important for Newburgh in the future and possibly riverfront development as it goes along. The Park District decided that this was a great opportunity for a connection in Newburgh to shorten routes and make it safer for people to get around Newburgh without getting on 99 and other streets that may be impassable. We are reaching out to the county as well as Newburgh. We're, we're just looking for options. We have, I think the Park District brings a lot of people into Newburgh. I think the Chamber of Commerce realizes that with all our facilities shut down. We, you know, we run the Camellia Festival every year, we help with the Old Fashioned Festival. We do a lot of things for the community and I, and I think that this is something that's worth pursuing. I know it's going to be a hardship on everyone. We're not sure where we're getting the money from, but we're going to try and forge ahead with it. So I'm just asking from the Park District to the city for the opportunity to move ahead and get some funding if possible.
All right, other questions, folks, anyone? I'll jump with one. So in 2015, did, did we provide a match in 2015, do we know?
No, we did not.
Okay. Is there a second follow-up question? Is there, is there a possibility of in-kind contribution to this for some city service, some kind of provision that way? Non-cash and otherwise?
I don't, now we'd have to have some conversations with the Park District. I know their application is due February 1st. I, I know, as we're working on the urban renewal program, so as we're updating our transportation system plan to implement the riverfront plan and as we're working on the urban renewal plan and that committee trying to identify what projects they might fund, this is a portion of that, a component of it. But those decisions and recommendations won't be made for a number of months yet on the urban renewal side.
For, for the purposes of getting the grant submitted, can we, can we separate out money at this point and talk about money later?
So in the draft of the letter that I prepared for council's consideration for support, it was just supporting the app, application. What was left unresolved was the match component. So if you look in that packet, it identifies that, I'm trying to find on the right page. It's identifies match source and says CPRD and Newburgh. Federally funded project estimate zero, state-funded project estimate 742050. So because of the unknowns, I did not put anything in the support letter on, on funding.
Casey, any idea of the timing of, of when you might hear back on this grant? And I'm just trying to line it up with our, with our budget cycle, right?
I'm, I don't know that for a fact, no.
I, I can answer that. The schedule is, the application is due the first of February. They'll have a screening and decisions will be made through the spring. They hope to award in the early summer and then actually have the funds distributed in mid to late summer. So that's the schedule that's currently posted. You know, so many schedules are. You know, so many schedules are lagging just because things take longer through COVID. But that's what they've identified, at least as a nominal schedule.
Mike?
So if this grant, let's say we decide to partner up or at least say we want to work with them. And this grant is issued. When... So you said the monies would be issued towards the mid to late summer. When would we have to or would we be required to actually come up with money that could be put into escrow and say, this is our funds and that we're going to commit to it? Do we have... I guess, when is that going to be finalized? When would we actually go, this is when we have to put up the money?
That's a really good question, Mike. My hunch is, and this is again off the cuff, I'm assuming before they release the money, they'd want to know who is contributing what to the match. My understanding would be that would occur sometime in the late spring, so May to June timeframe theoretically. I know that's getting close to the end of the fiscal year. You know, whether you'd have additional expenses, you'd be in better position to determine by then.
Yeah, Steph?
So I love this project. I think it's a great project and it's something personally, I think my family and my neighborhood would use. But I'm really hesitant to commit funds right when we're about to go into a budget season where things look very different than they have in previous years. And, you know, I just, I love the project, but I'm not sure I'm ready to commit this kind of money before we sort of know how we sit as the city for how we're going to be able to kind of move through the next fiscal, couple fiscal years. So, you know, while I love it, I don't think I'm ready to say yes to that amount of money.
Yeah, Mike?
So maybe this question is for Dan. Dan, would we be able to use SDC funds at all? Is this something that we would be able to use?
I think I might defer to Doug, but I don't, honestly, I don't think so. I, you know, I'm not sure that that would be appropriate.
I'd have to do some double-checking, Counselor, but I don't believe that this bridge is on our SDC-eligible list.
Right. Bryce?
Just point of clarification, because Mike, sorry. Doug, you'd mentioned that in your recommendation, it didn't speak to the financial piece. So in voting on this, is it voting both in support of the plan as well as the matching? Or is there a way in which they're separated where we could support the plan, but then readdress the matching piece at a different time and date when we have a better idea of what finances look like?
My opinion would be that the letter is drafted would support the submitted of the application, but the application itself would not specifically list the city as a funding match contributor at this time because at this point, the council has not identified that. And as I mentioned earlier, our funds are committed and not sure where the money would come from.
Right, right. But we could, in theory, later come back. You know, should we want to take this up as a priority that we do want to end up matching funds, right?
Yes, you could.
Elise?
Just talking out here. Is this something that we could reappropriate or read TLT funds?
My... Transient lodging tax. I mean, honestly, on that one, I think I might ask James and he may need a few more minutes to think about it. But I'm not sure that it would qualify.
Because I feel like some of the other projects that we had considered to grant were semi, I mean, semi-similar.
I think that's true. I think the distinction, and what I heard, and correct me, is the idea that this is kind of connecting people to work and connecting more of, you know, residents to, you know, services or amenities around. And while that's a good thing, you know, the TLT of, you know, essentially creating a tourist amenity or, you know, something that may be attractive. And obviously, maybe that is something that, you know, trail system could be marketed and all those things. I mean, there may be a nexus.
Yeah. Trails, roadways, things like that are usually subject to a multi-factor test when it comes to applying TLT funds. That is a bit borderline. I can certainly go back and take a look at the authority that we've got here in Oregon and bring that to the council. But all projects that kind of land in this general space don't necessarily qualify.
And I think, yeah, Counselor, the question kind of predicated off when there was an award of dollars to Wolves and People for a tourist trail that connected the brewery to the winery. And that was specifically focused on tourist attraction. Ultimately, the council withdrew that grant award as Wolves and People was not able to move forward.
Denise?
My only, my only comment is I really appreciate the trail. I don't use it. It's in front of my house, the big one. It gets a lot of use, probably tripled since COVID. Like 24/7, there's a person and a dog walking around. I really would struggle with the matching fund, however. Because, you know, if it's not in our plan, it's not in our plan. While I appreciate the overall health and well-being of the citizens of Newburgh and their ability to walk and their ability to get to work, this really, you can start... You could start making arguments for other things as soon as you open that floodgate. And I'm, I would be concerned with that.
Other comments or questions, folks? I have a one... Are you Casey or Paul? Are you, beyond the grant through the pathways or Oregon communities, are you going for other grants for this?
Not currently. So this is a grant that comes along from time to time. We've gone after Tiger Grants and other grants. And, you know, I've not, I've come really close, but not been the group that's been awarded money. So this one looks really good for a number of reasons. We've been in contact with the Bike Ped Program at ODOT. We've gone down and talked to them in Salem. They're interested in the project. So it seems like a number of things are starting to line up. That's why we're particularly excited about it. But we're not aware of any upcoming additional grant programs that we could pivot to if we needed to, if we weren't successful with this one.
Yeah, I was just trying to think more of a, you know, trying to fill that match more than another total grant source, but trying to fill that gap. So, all right, well, personally, I mean, I'm totally in favor of saying that we're in support of the trail. I'm not so sure at this moment in time. More, it's more, first, I don't know how much, how many dollars. And then secondly, we haven't even begun the budget process for the coming year. And Lord knows with COVID and everything else, it's going to be tough enough. But, but I, you know, if there was a, an amount that would assist that wouldn't bust the budget at the city, I'd be all for it because I think it is a great amenity. And it's, it would be a neat thing. And this promised path to Dundee and beyond is pretty darn cool. So, but anyway, the rest of y'all, what, what do you think? Yep.
I mean, I, CPRD, they've already, Casey has already made the point that he's not really sure where the money's going to come from. But I think we, if we liked the idea, and I think most of the counselors, I don't want to speak for you, but I think most of you feel that that's a good point. I think, let's just say yes, let's partner with it because they don't know where they're going to get the money. They're going to have to figure that out. And so are we. And if neither one of us can really come up with the funds, then it gets awarded to the next person. And so, but at least we have our name in the hat, so to speak, in first place, hopefully. And we figured that piece out. But we have to, I think, position ourselves to be able to take on possibilities when they arise. And so that would be my, I'm going to, if we have a vote, I'm going to vote for it. I don't know where we're going to get the money. And I have those concerns, the rest of the counselors do. But at least I think we ought to put a step forward.
All right, would, any further discussion? Would someone like to make a motion? Or maybe, Doug, you could suggest a motion that would cover us with the letter, but not necessarily at this moment with money?
Well, I had a motion in your RCTA that reads, "Motion to have the mayor sign and forward the Newburgh-Dundee Bypass Trail Phase 1 2021 Oregon Communities' Pass Grant Support Letter to the Shaheilum Park and Recreation District." The question then is, what words would you add regarding the match dollar amount? And that... I know, I might look at my colleagues, the city manager and the city attorney to help me with some word smipping on that one.
Can we just leave off the, you know, leave it broad and say, you know, we're willing to partner as best we can, potentially including financial, and not commit beyond that we love the project?
If we did something like that, then we'd want to change the letter. So the motion could stand. And the very last paragraph of the letter, it reads, "The City of Newburgh is pleased to offer our support for the Shaheilum Park and Recreation District 2021 Oregon Communities' Pass Grant for the Newburgh-Dundee Bypass Trail Phase 1 Grant and look forward to working with the Park District to identify matching funds."
I don't know. I don't know about you all, but I'm good with that. I mean, if that sounds all right to James and to Dan.
Doug, are you reading that last piece about the matching funds? Is that an actual, I'm looking at the, that's, you're thinking that as a potential add to the letter? Is that right?
Yes, that would be an add to the last paragraph in the letter.
Okay. So can you read the language once more, just so I'm tracking? Now that I've got the letter up, just so I'm tracking? Because I do want to be careful there about the...
The words. Yeah. Our conversation earlier today, the words.
Indeed, indeed.
"The City of Newburgh is pleased to offer our support for the Shaheilum Park and Recreation District 2021 Oregon Communities' Pass Grant for the Newburgh-Dundee Bypass Trail Phase 1 Grant and look forward to working with CPRD to identify matching funds." I'm okay with that. That's fine.
Yeah, I guess one of the things that I'm looking at is the attachment to, which has number eight. As you go down the list, an estimated timeline and construction schedule and phases. You know, the construction of this is proposed to be 2023 to 2024. And obviously, this council can't put forward money for that point. But I mean, that may be the time to reconsider. Assuming, you know, the big question, I guess, from my experience with grants is that they're going to want to know, the grantor is going to want to know upfront exactly how much you got, you know, where it's coming from and that it's secure. And then, you know, if we're looking to help with construction at that point, you know, which would give us some flexibility with COVID, it's probably pretty tough to make that commitment.
Yeah. That was Don's question when we first came up with this. And we just thought it was a great time to apply. It comes up, like Paul said, every so often. And we just wanted to get on it. And Don will figure out how to finance it somehow. If you see me standing on the corner with a cup in my hand, you'll know why.
I mean, again, just, you know, as you said, knowing the way these things go with grants and all. I mean, again, as long as we're not committing ourselves because we don't know. And we don't, we don't even know what we have to commit. But the concept, to me, the concept is great. I'd love to get it, love to get you guys, love to have you guys land this grant. It would be huge for the, for the community, be great for all of us, so.
Well, it kind of goes hand in hand with them demolishing the mill site, too.
Which is happening, which is...
It is happening. I saw it the other day.
It is going on right now, so, yeah. All right, folks, what do you think? Anybody want to make that motion that Doug? Yep, go ahead, Mike.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and partner with CPRD with this grant application, as Doug mentioned.
So approval for the, for the letter as amended?
Right, yes.
Is that adequate, Doug, you think? And anybody that worked for the motion?
If everybody agreed with the language, the additional language that I proposed, yes.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
I don't know. I don't know. I couldn't tell who said the second.
Bryce can have it.
Right, give it to Bryce. Here we go. All right, any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by raising your left hands. Tools? Can't tell if you're... You might be frozen. There you are, you were frozen. All right, okay, looks like unanimous, Sue. All right, thank you all. Thanks, Casey, Paul, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick and Counsel.
And good luck.
Doug, thank you.
Right, yeah. All right. Let's see, what now? We're on to council committee reports. Anything to report, folks? I, well, all right. If you did not have a chance to watch the MLK Day celebration yesterday evening at the Shaheilum Cultural Center, I strongly encourage you to do so. I thought it was a, it was a great show. Our very own Bryce Cofield was the emcee and did a wonderful job. The music was fantastic. The keynote speaker was absolutely unbelievable. So if you haven't had a chance, and that's not just for you all as counselors and staff, but anybody who might be listening in, do check it out. It was, it was pretty neat. So there you go. Neat and timely, so there you are. All right, anything else? Nope, nope, I'm seeing heads shaking. All right then, well, we are, we are out of here then. And we will see you all in a couple of weeks. Thank you for all of your good works, all of y'all. Thank you. Have a good night.